Good afternoon, everyone. We will call to order the April 7th, 25 meeting of the Charter Review Commission at 2:59 PM. Roll call, Madam Clerk? Manager?
There for I am. Min Cox?
Here.
Andrea Honeycutt?
Here.
Yumiko Motley?
Present.
Kurt Geis?
Here.
Hey, we got you via Zoom and Sal Murillo?
Here.
Got you via Zoom as well.
Okay, we would move for approval of the March 31st meeting minutes, however, I have one revision, which would be the presence of Wade Voss.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I caught that when I was revising them. Um, I also changed in the first paragraph under Call to Order that you called the meeting to order and not staff. So I made those two revisions.
Having no other revisions, we would request a motion to approve the minutes from the March 31st meeting.
Make that motion with the revision.
Second.
Moved improperly second. The approval of the agenda for the March 31st meeting. And we'll move forward to Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion of the Draft Amendment to Section 2.5C.
My apologies, Madam Chair, I think we need to take a vote on approval of the minutes.
All in favor of the approval of the minutes for the 3:31 meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we will move forward to Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion of the Draft Amendment of Section 2.5C, Billing of Vacancies.
I don't have any issues with it.
Any discussion, Stephanie, on that item?
Uh, no, I think we, we pretty thoroughly discussed it last time, and so this is just the, the proposed, based upon your direction, this is the proposed language. Um, and if anyone has, has any questions or any changes that they would like to make, we are happy to discuss.
Just to recap, that, that provision was revised to provide for a 90-day provision and removal of the appointment by the governor to allow for a special election if the position is not filled.
Yes, that is the, the effect of this language.
Awesome, thank you.
So, so I did have a question, if I may. Apologies, it's hard to tell who's, who's speaking or not, but um, when the time comes, I did have a question.
Sure, now you can ask that now?
Yeah, okay, so, so in rereading it, maybe just the way it's, it's seeing it all kind of together. So there's, we, I saw where we extended from 30 days to 90 days, right, which, which is good. And then it says by the affirmative votes of not less than three members uh, to fill, and then if it's not, if such vacancy is not filled within the 90 days after, then they shall appoint a special election, right? It, I guess I'm logically, having thought about it, how do we end up with a special election? If, if there's three persons voting unless one of them abstains and the other two tie, or the, all three of them abstain, like, how, how does it ever end to a special? The way it's written, how would it ever land in a special election?
Sure, um, I could, could see a few different scenarios. One would be if the various town commission members are unable to uh, decide on who they want to appoint, and so we just never reached that point of having three of them in agreement. Um, I, I could also see maybe in a more extreme scenario, because the affirmative votes of not less than three are required. Um, you know, if we're for any reason down to a three-member commission, getting that, that consensus could be even more difficult because you would need all three. Uh, so those are the two first scenarios that, that come to mind. Um, there could also be theoretically a situation where finding the right candidate or the right appointee would be difficult. So Wade, I don't know if you have any additional thoughts as to how we could um, end up with a special election by not appointing someone in 90 days?
Does this work? Alright, I think the most likely uh, one would be three members, at least three members can't agree on the same individual to appoint.
Okay, thank you.
So just for clarification, Wade, um, so in the event that, let's say, three members did not agree on a candidate in that meeting, would there be an alternate manner of revoting on that issue in a meeting?
Yes, uh, under this language, or at least the way that I read and construed this language, the town commission would be able to take a vote as many times as they want. Um, and you know, say it takes five or six different rounds of voting for them to, to get to a point where three are in agreement, uh, that, that would be allowed.
Okay, any additional commentary on that matter? Hearing none, we would move to the presentation of additional information regarding the municipal charter provisions governing the term limits and voting districts.
Alright, I will just speak a little bit about this one. Um, per your request, I have prepared this table and it lists municipalities that are comparable in size to the town of Oakland and indicates whether those municipalities have voting districts and term limits in their charter. And I would like to be clear that by term limits, I mean, um, you know, a maximum number of two, four-year terms or something like that, not, not simply indicating that, you know, a term is three years and then a person has to be elected again. That's not what we mean by, by term limits, so just to clarify. Um, and the, the findings ultimately came out that most of the municipalities do not have voting districts. The only one that did out of the municipalities uh, that I pulled was Belle Isle. And for term limits, the only municipalities on this list that have term limits are Hillsborough Beach, and that is four consecutive two-year terms is the limit. And Fort Myers Beach, uh, it's two consecutive four-year terms.
From the Florida League of Cities, uh, they have 187 municipalities in the state of Florida with a population less than 5,000. And, you know, I reviewed your list, but it seems like we could go more as far as if there was an ability to search that information. And so I was gonna kind of ask before I contact anybody, is it, is it okay for me to contact somebody from the Florida League of Cities to help with search of that database?
Yes, um, the guy that was here, Chris Hawley, um, might be a good point of contact.
Yeah.
I mean, that's
Any additional discussion with regard to the data provided from our attorney um, with regard to the city or the municipalities with term limits and districting?
I, I did have one, I think maybe builds on what Mr. Cox had, had mentioned. If, if I look at the table, um, it's kind of where Oakland is now regarding population, right? But, but I believe during one of the earlier meetings, we had said the projection, given that we want the charter to make it through for the next 10 years, in 10 years, we believe the population may double and, and we may be closer to 10,000, if not above it. Uh, i- is there a significant change in the voting districts or term limits when we look at what we think the population will be in 10 years, which is whatever it is, 10,000, 11,000? So I'm just wondering if, if the table is representative of that bigger size? Or does it, does it change? Do we know?
I don't know one way or the other.
Without a rigorous, you know, completionist analysis, if the Florida League of Cities does have a table with, with information like that broken out, that would be wildly useful. I, I haven't seen such a table broken out in that way from Florida League of Cities, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. That would be very useful for all those analyses. I would suggest you, just from my observation around the state, I don't know that you would see, at least in the, the cities I've observed, either directly working with or, or otherwise observing. I don't know that you would see substantial variation with respect to the districting until you got to a substantially larger number. I can't tell you when you get into, um, uh, up into the, the 10,000s to 20,000s and so on, you may start seeing more term limits. Uh, Winter Park, for example, has uh, term limits. Um, and they're somewhere, what, 25,000 right now or something like this? Whereas other cities within Orange County with a larger population than that don't have term limits. So it, it can be part based on the history in that particular city, but you probably start seeing a little bit more as you get up into the tens and 20,000s on the term limit side, not necessarily on the district side. As I alluded to the last time I was here, I guess, two meetings uh, ago, start hitting some mathematical problems when you're, when you're chopping up discrete geographic areas with a discrete number of individuals. Uh, how that works out tends to work out better over much larger numbers than very small numbers, even at the 10,000 range.
Um, I did reach out to Orange County Supervisor of Elections, and they are willing to send somebody to come talk to us a little bit more about districting and what they may look like. Um, I just don't have a date yet, I'm seeing if they could be here for our next meeting, but I don't know if, if that's going to actually happen, or if we're gonna have to look at a date in the future, but they are willing to come out and talk to us about that.
And I think coupled with your discussion with the Supervisor of Elections, we discussed um, potential data regarding our voter turnout demographics to have a more um, complete view of the potential term limits based on the population size that we have now and what we would anticipate in the 10-year period. The increase at the 10-year period for the next review.
And you'll notice, I, I did hand out a one pager that just, it's more Orange County, um, Sal and Kurt. I'll have to get this to you, I just pulled it together today. Um, but it shows, I pulled out Orlando and Apopka because they were the outliers as far as population. But you can see population, let me pull it up for you guys online, I have it available, hold on. You can see population, voting percentage, um, and, and other demographic factors. So you can see in 2022, um, Oakland had a 29.1% voter turnout. So, not really bad. 2022, it went down a little bit, 13.4% voter turnout. And then you can see, I think we talked about this a bit, about the increased engagement recently, so in um, 2024, our voter turnout, they did it a little different. Hold, hold on, it's over here. Um, it's third, was 35.4%. If you compare it to our other jurisdictions in Orange County, we were actually one of the higher ones.
That was a March election, right?
That was a presidential preference primary as well as our, um, yeah, contested election here.
Any additional discussion?
You don't have the information from November selection?
I only pulled it for the ones where we had a municipal election. We could pull it for November elections, it's, it's available. But I was only pulling to see what our voter turnout was for our local elections.
Okay. Hearing no additional discussion, I believe it would be prudent for us to reconvene this issue at a time that the Supervisor of Elections is able to be present and further analysis of the information provided um, in relation to our respective um, increase.
And just to manage expectations for everyone, and Elise, correct me if I'm wrong, but I imagine it would be a staff person from the Supervisor of Elections office. I'm sure uh, the Supervisor would love to visit all over the county, and she does, but it's probably going to be a staff person, maybe from their GIS mapping department or what have you.
Sounds like Dan Helm is that person, um, and then he can pull in somebody from GIS mapping if he's, if they're available.
Okay, moving forward with Agenda Item Number Six, which would be our discussions of Chapters 1 through 3 of the Charter. Um, in congruence with our decision to make sure that we did a full review of each of the articles in the Charter.
Madam Chair, a- as, as you go through the um, the articles, uh, I've found sometimes it's a little helpful to know what each article is supposed to be doing, or what they're supposed to be accomplishing. I can add a little commentary to that end if that would be helpful. If you all wanted to start uh, doing in order here, Article 1, as the, the name alludes to, it establishes the corporate existence of the town and sets up certain things concerning the form of government and powers. Particularly notable, uh, Section 1.4 Powers. This is basically, and you find this in most charters in Florida, this is a copy and paste directly from what's called the Municipal Home Rule Powers Act. Okay, it's meant to be incredibly broad on purpose. Uh, and it's usually advisable to leave it with that very broad language, because that's precisely what the legislature was getting at. Usually when you want to get down to the weeds on something else, you might do it elsewhere. But um, generally, this first article here is, is getting at the basics, creating it, saying generally that it's going to be mayor, commission manager, form of government. Of course, when they specify these terms like that, that, that is a general reference to the type of government. The particulars of how that works sit out in the rest of the Charter. And then, of course, charters, municipal charters in Florida either contain the meets and bounds legal descriptions of the entire municipality, or they make a reference to those being on file with the clerk's office. That is the modern trend, because quite frankly, you end up with pages and pages of meets and bounds legal descriptions. So that's what you have going on in Article 1. If anybody has any questions or comment or anything concerning Article 1s.
Hearing none, we would move to Article 2, Town Commission and Mayor.
And Article 2 is, is getting into a lot more of the actual meat and potatoes of uh, where you look at interesting things in the Charter. This is, of course, the article that sets up the governing body of the town, the Town Commission, and establishes uh, the offices of Mayor and Vice Mayor, setting forth the powers of the Mayor uh, and the designation of the Vice Mayor to serve in that role in absence or incapacity of the Mayor. Also, of course, uh, dealing with all the other matters uh, that are set out in here concerning elections, qualifications, vacancies, and uh, compensation. I don't want to bore you all going through all the weeds of all that, I'm sure you all all that, because there's a lot of things going on. This uh, this would be a good time if anybody has um, either related to what's been brought up uh, previously or otherwise new items concerning matters either directly addressed or touching on what's going on in Article 2. Be a good time to
At the last meeting, uh, your office had recommended some changes to 2.5B. Uh, is, are we there now?
We certainly can be, absolutely, and I'm actually uh, bringing up, um, so I have in front of me a copy of that memo as well. Just one second, I can follow along precisely with that. Is the, is the final version in the file share? Steph, or I can find it in the email. Not a problem at all, give me just one second, so sorry.
And while you're looking, just to clarify, we had talked about delaying further discussions of districting and term limits. Alright, we're skipping over that, 2.3. Skip over that.
Well, while we're looking for that, I think um, the preceding section, 2.4, related to qualifications, there was discussion at the last meeting with regard to the term residency. Um, and I think Stephanie indicated, you know, that definition was pretty clear. However, we would lean to case law regarding any discrepancies in that, and I wasn't aware of whether you did some additional research um, regarding that term and its definition.
I, I did not prepare any sort of language that I would um, bring forward to be considered, but uh, I think probably now would be a good time to discuss. I mean, Wade, any legal opinions as to defining residency in, in a charter?
So, there are um, this, this is a matter that um, is interesting for folks, I'll tell you all over the state, alright? When you're dealing with the, the question of residency. Question of residency uh, with respect to being eligible to run for an office is intimately tied with residency to be eligible to vote in a particular place, alright? And eligibility to vote is uh, in a, in a given place in the given election, is governed by state law, alright? It's governed by state law, and interestingly, not defined in the statutes. It's as you alluded to, it's, it's developed in case law. It really boils down to the conjunction of, of uh, two facts, alright? It is a uh, an intention to reside in a particular place coupled with facts to back up that intention. Alright, that's really what all the case law boils down to. If I said to you today, I'm a resident of Anchorage, Alaska, so I can vote in Anchorage, Alaska, alright? I may have an intention to be a resident in Anchorage, Alaska, but I don't have, I myself don't have a residence in Anchorage, Alaska, or any place I can meaningfully show evidence that I reside in that place, so I break one of those elements, alright? Otherwise, if you can have both of those elements, then you end up with uh, you end up with residency under the uh, relevant case law. There's also other wrinkles that makes it very difficult to go defining precisely, uh, trying to put down in just a sentence uh, precisely what you'd have in a Charter with regard to establishing or with regard to the definition of residency. There are matters that come up in case law that's developed this point. We've actually had to deal with this uh, over in some of our coastal cities uh, from time to time. Where it comes to be, somebody's uh, house is temporarily destroyed within the city. And you have to live, you're living in a hotel outside of the city for three to six months while it's getting repaired, and so on. Under the relevant case law, that individual, if they have, they own that house and they have a present intention to return when they can, they are a resident of that house and can continue to vote there and continue to run there and so on, alright? Um, so there are all sorts of fact patterns that the case law over the many decades, probably well over 100 years, has developed how to deal with these things, it'd be difficult to encapsulate into a sentence or two. One thing I can offer, if there's any interest in it, is we can look a little further into uh, maybe putting a little meat on the bones as to what sort of evidence the uh, town may look to, to in the first instance, establish residency, alright? So as opposed to changing the definition of residency, a little meat on the bones of, alright, what sort of evidence in the first instance is the town going to look for or ask for to demonstrate satisfaction of that case law definition? This is something, for example, and I don't recall off the top of my head whether it's actually in their Charter or in their code, the City of Orlando does this. They have um, some people think too rigorous, they have very rigorous uh, evidence that has to be demonstrated to demonstrate your residency, still using the, the case law definition. So if there's any interest along those lines, that would probably be a little bit more of a fruitful route. I, I'd recommend being able to put a little meat on the bones on that, we could report back to you on that if that's the desire of the committee.
Would that be better addressed as an ordinance?
Could be, um, but uh, in any event, what, what I would suggest is it's something, again, if, if it's the interest of the committee, we could take a look at that further. It's not common, I just happen to know that City of Orlando has uh, has a little bit of that fleshing out. I can't recall off the top of my head whether that's in their Charter or uh, in an ordinance. If we come back to you and, and take a look at a couple of those things and find the trend tends to be in ordinance, let you know that. The, as I think has been mentioned before, um, the, the, the yin and yang, if you will, of Charter Amendment versus ordinance is if you put some things in your Charter and then you find out it would be uh, wise to include additional things, you're going back to the voters again. Uh, whereas with an ordinance, you find, uh, we left something out, relatively more straightforward way to deal with that, so. Uh, and this could be one of those matters where the collective wisdom of those jurisdictions, where they have something like that, it's leaning in that direction, but.
Is it legal to request a copy of a Florida driver's license?
This is an example of, of, you know, the type of documentation that you need to provide to substantiate, uh, so yes, I, I believe that is one of the examples that City of Orlando requires.
I think we also discussed in the prior meeting, um, voter registration is one of those elements of evidence of residency. Um, but in light of your discussion, I think it would be fruitful to just take a look at um, the reference provision in City of Orlando Charter versus ordinance to be a little more well abreast of, you know, what direction we may want to go if need.
We'd be glad to take it further.
Uh, this is Kurt, uh, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but I did have a question. Um, each time we task staff or the attorneys to do work for us, how does that build out and is that a cost to the taxpayer? how does that build out and is that a cost to the taxpayer?
It's a great question. Our law firm is serves as Town Attorney for the town on a fixed fee. So while I wouldn't invite you to ask us to research 50 different things, if you're not really interested in it, any particular additional thing we're going to be taking a look at it is included in our. So no marginal cost, no hourly cost for us taking a look at that.
Thank you.
Wade, were you able to pull up the memorandum with regard to? Okay. I think we leaned to you for some additional insight regarding those provisions in 2.5B.
Sure. And taking a look at, I can walk through this real quick because I know you all took a look at it a little bit, but since we're in Article Two, we can take a look again. Looking at 2.5B forfeiture by disqualification. This one, this first one, 2.5B was purely a grammatical cleanup. It, when we had taken a look at it, we didn't think it flowed particularly clearly. We think we're pretty clear as to what it means or is supposed to mean, but we thought that adding this a little bit of additional language here would make it, make its meaning clearer. It's not meant to change the legal effect of any of it. And I will note, and I think it got noted at the last meeting, I understand as well, anything that's referenced as a cleanup in this memo is the, the thoughts or intentions are at least two. One, it is the intention that we're not changing what either the actual legal effect or what we think the legal effect was supposed to be, if you will. There's a piece where it looks like literally half a sentence got, you know, cut off in a copy and paste and so on. And generally with regard to most or all the things that are referenced as cleanup here, we believe those could all be put together under a single Charter Amendment that be put on the ballot that just makes general reference to the fact that it's cleaning up references in the Charter and so on. We have standard line that we've used in a number of jurisdictions that clearly expresses that, but makes clear to the public, we're not radically changing.
While we're on the topic of vacancies and candidacy, I, if I recall correctly, at the last meeting, a question came up and, and please correct me if I misunderstood or am misremembering the question. I think the question was about what if there are more than two candidates remaining after there is vacancy and candidacy? And under this language, whether you have two candidates, three candidates, four minute, four candidates or, or any number, it, it would be handled the same.
And one, one additional thing I would note about moving on down here actually to, to in the memo to 2.5B about well, how it's originally styled, filling of vacancies and, and candidacy. We struck the, the filling of vacancies because nowhere in that language did it actually fill any vacancies. So it took that out. Want to give you, where, where this concept comes from, want to give you a contrast between two different types of elections. And that is partisan elections and nonpartisan elections. Stephanie, did you all dive into that very much last time? Okay. Yeah. Let me, let me give you a contrast of what you find in the Florida Election Code. All right? Florida Election Code contemplates partisan elections. And what I mean by that is it contemplates partisan elections. It exempts out municipal elections as you do it the way your, your Charter and ordinance to say unless the election code expressly says, no, this applies to municipalities. So municipalities generally around the state are nonpartisan elections. In the context, context of partisan elections under the Florida Election Code, you go through and you have, you have a primary, all right, where, where folks from two parties are running to be the partisan, that party's nominee in the general election. All right? So they have a primary in October, just on the regular cycle. And this is typical, for example, with state reps, state senators and so on. If it comes to be, or for example, in Orange County with our constitutional officers, because I'll give you an example from here in Orange County years ago. If it comes to be that each party has nominated their candidate for their party to run in the general election. So you have a Republican and Democrat running in that election. And say, for example, the Democrat resigns or passes away while they are the party nominee running for the general election. All right? This happened years ago, just as an example, here in Orange County with Earl K. Wood. Y'all remember Earl K. Wood? He was the property appraiser for, no, pardon me, the tax collector for a trillion years, over 50. All right? He ran one more time and he passed away while he was the Democrat nominee, running one more time. The way the Florida Election Code provides for filling that vacancy, it's not automatically the Republican wins in that instance. In that instance, pursuant to some rules set out in it, the Democrat Party has the opportunity to then choose someone else to put into that spot after the primary. And that occurred, they put in Scott Randolph, who is now, who went on to win that election, is now the tax collector. But in big contrast with partisan elections, you have an outside entity, you have a political party that could make some choices about whatever. The universal observation that I've seen in everything with regard to vacancies in candidacy, when you have a situation where you have nonpartisan elections, there's no one to go to, to ask, hey, who's, who should we put in in its place? Because you're not, in nonpartisan elections, an individual's not running as a representative. So it's, this just lays out basically what would be, it, it just lays out in written form, you know, precisely what would happen. Two people running, one of them resigns, withdraws, passes away or whatever. The other one wins. If all of them come out, then, you know, you got whatever. If you have three or more and one of them comes out, you still have two and things go on and so on. So this just kind of lays out what would be the natural circumstance in a nonpartisan, partisan instance there. All this language here is, is just cleaning it up to make it a little. Any question, more questions about? We had already talked about 2.5C earlier in your agenda. And I think this memo, yeah, was in order. So that's everything in Article Two from that. Other than the two matters that, that that have been brought up previously concerning term limits and districts, were there any other topics or thoughts for changes to this article?
So I think in two, maybe 2.6 is the right spot for it. And this shows up also in our list of items for future discussion. There was a note in there about compensation comparison. While, while there's no significant compensation for the commission now, I think the question was, should there be, and specifically to combat the, the, not combat, maybe a strong word, but a, as we look at low turnout for participants for, let's say, districting, if we were to go that route, it would be interesting to understand, does compensation improve that in any way? And if so, what were some comparisons for populations of the target size which Oakland wanted to become? So I don't, that was a point, I don't know if, to answer your question, is that, is that this the right time? Since I think it falls in Section 2.6?
I think it's worth, worth bringing up at, at this point. Let me make sure I understand. Is, is you're bringing up more of an inquiry about whether or not there's, there's any evidence or data to support the idea that paying substantially more on a counselor or commission will lead to more candidates running?
Yeah. So maybe two-part question, right? First part is exactly that, right? If, if there was compensation, does it have an effect on turnout and thereby, thereby kind of alleviate some of the concerns that districting would paint us in a, in a, in a, in a poor spot because of low turnout? Meaning if there was some compensation, does that have an effect? I don't know, right? That's one question. The other one.
And just for clarification sake, by turnout, you mean folks, I take it you mean folks running for offices?
Great clarification. Yep. Folks running for, for a position. The other part was just a gauge, a comparison amongst peer towns with a population of Oakland's target. Do other commissions have any compensation? Is it the same as Oakland's or is it, is it different?
With regard to, let me take the second one first. If there is a database with Florida League of Cities broken out with some kind of basic points, I would speculate that, that one of them might be commissioner or council member compensation. That might be worthwhile. It's always a worthwhile thing to ask if, if the league happens to have such data. I, I will tell you, yeah, collecting that, collecting that information otherwise, particularly along, across a large segment may be intractable, but.
When we just, we just sent in a lot of data to FLC for city, city stats.
Is that one of the pieces of data?
It, they did ask that. Cool. So hopefully they do.
They, yeah, they may be able to spit that out and that might be useful just for, for folks to see. You know, ours, our current charter provides just that it's, the primary matter is, is that it's set by ordinance and, but it can't take place or, you know, can't go into effect until commencement of the next, commencement of terms after the next general election, which is a typical provision. But there are other charter provisions that actually specify numbers in the high inflation environment. That's increasingly seen as not perfect in the long term. But in any event, that could be a useful piece of information. With regard to the first question, that, that sounds like that might be an interesting whole semester-long political science research project. Because you're, you're looking, you're looking for a correlation between, you know, higher numbers and more people running. I, I don't know that that would be an easily pull, you know, something to easily pull that piece out.
Yeah, no, understood. If, if the data point's not there, then it's not there. Right? I'm not, I'm not advocating a full-on research. Right? Although anyone who's interested in can certainly do so. But, but yeah, I think it's more just to gauge Oakland as a town amongst its peers of towns that are approximately whatever it is, 10K in population. Right? So maybe that, that's, that sounds like Florida League of Cities might have that data point and then just be requesting it.
I, I can check for that. I do want to add though, that originally, from what I've been able to find, the compensation for our commission was actually higher and they actually lowered it. And that the reason they lowered it, my understanding was so that they didn't have to pay taxes on it. So that's why it's at 5.99 instead of 600 or plus.
Okay. Any additional discussion with regard to the point raised on compensation? Then we would move to Article Three Administrative. And look to Wade for a discussion on the purpose and.
Absolutely. So as it indicates, Article Three Administrative, this is when you're getting into your other branch of government from your, from your governing body, the Town Commission, getting over to the Town Manager and related administrative roles, including references to powers and duties of the Town Manager, how they're appointed and removed. And then of course, other offices, Town Clerk, Police Department. Town Clerk is, is a common office you find in charters, not universal. In city manager form of governments, forms of government, of course, city manager or town manager is essential characteristic of it. Having reference to the Police Department and matters relating to the Police Department is actually a, a matter you do see in a number of charters, particularly ones dating back from older times. It is not universal. Even a lot of cities that have, that have police departments don't necessarily allow the Police Department as separately in its administrative article. Reference to the position of Town Attorney, which is a pretty universal reference you find in municipal charters in Florida. Reference here to expenditure of town funds, no funds, the town shall be expended except pursuant to duly approved appropriations. That's kind of a truism or tautology. That's, that's the requirement under Florida law anyway. So saying it out loud. And the finally, with respect to town boards and committees, the commission shall establish or terminate such boards and committees as may deem, may deem advisable from time to time. Boards and committees shall report to the commission. This is the norm in council or, or commission, manager, forms of government. But I have seen instances where you have just one officer making determinations of boards and committees and so, not suggesting that. There is some variety among different charters, but this is by far the most typical where boards and committees will be creations governing bodies as a whole. So let me take a look just back on our suggestions here for revisions on our initial memo. Section 3.4 references acting Town Manager. As you can see from that bracket there, they had the, when, when you see a bracket in, in legislation like this, and either in a charter or an ordinance, it means the code codifier stuck in a word to make it, make any sort of sense at all. Particularly when you have an article like the and so on, that's seen as fine. But as you can see there, it really doesn't get at a complete set of thoughts as it's talking about the commission may revoke such designation. We don't even know what designation it is, except by reading title to that section. It just happens to be as the, the memo references, and I, I think Stephanie may have referenced before, this language is very standard stock language you find in a lot of municipal charters throughout Florida. And it is, the language that we put in that memo is very typical of the language you find among charters. The idea being to allow the Town Manager to designate another employee to, to run the shop in the temporary absence or disability. This happens all the time throughout the state of Florida. That someone goes on vacation, they're not going to be immediately available. Someone's going in for the hospital for a couple of days. Somebody's going to be this, that, or whatever. Somebody else has got to run the shop. Somebody else has got to make a transfer on time, if you will. This, the language specified here makes it subject to the approval of the commission. That is typical. I will tell you, that is not universal. Okay? And there are a number of cities where it's simply the Town Manager just designates somebody, not subject to any other approval of anybody, but almost universally it is subject to the Town Council or the Town Commission undoing that, putting someone else in temporarily. That's if something really goes off the rails during the two weeks when the actual Town Manager is away. Very rare, but can happen. The language that you have here in this memo does kind of lean in the direction of, of, you know, putting that power of approval, not choosing in the first instance, but paying it in the commission. All right? What this means effectively is you'd need two things, the Town. you'd need two things. The town manager, you need to designate somebody who's going to be in case something unplanned happens. Somebody's got to run the shop the next day. All right, somebody's got to be making things happen. So that would be, somebody's designated, the commission proved that, hopefully never using it. Um, and then you could have instances where town manager's going on vacation, you know, six weeks hence. And you bring it up to the town commission these days, going to be appointing um so-and-so to be the acting town manager. Uh, on the dawn, I would ask for the so move second all in favor, say aye. So that's just filling in those gaps there. So it's it's crystal clear what we're talking about with that county town manager. I'll be glad to answer the questions on that.
Formulating in my mind, so this is in the instance of an acting town manager's absence or disability. And obviously in light of the recent removal of the prior town manager, we would revert back to the mayor appointing a town manager subject to the approval of the commission in in a in a circumstance of removal versus absence or disability.
Yeah, so uh uh let me draw a distinction uh for you, just the um, these are kind of vernacular terms, how they're used in the um kind of in the business. Um, you got acting town manager, then you might have someone that they call an interim. Okay, um, interim is usually getting uh is usually getting more at not uh temporary in the sense that the town manager is and is always, you know, is staying the town manager, but they're just indisposed. Interim just means there is no town manager and someone's going to be the town manager. To be quite clear, usually when someone says interim town manager, they're the town manager. It just means it's just you're connoting to the public, they're the town manager, but they might be the town manager just for a short period of time until you decide someone else is the town manager for a longer period or indeterminate period of time. Um, if that, if that helps. Uh, so it's why typically you don't, you don't really see the term interim town manager in a lot of charters, because the idea is they're the town manager. It might just be you're the town manager for X period of time while we search for someone else to be the town manager for a longer period. And the, you know, the the fact patterns can get a little, you know, different from place to place and so on. There have been I've seen a lot of instances where, you know, folks become the interim city uh manager or interim village manager, town manager, what have you. And then just by um even without any further action, I know there was in this instance, uh, which is always the preferable way to make sure everybody clearly knows what's going on. There, I've seen instances where folks just stop using the term interim and that person is continues to be there because they are the city manager or town manager, what have you, and they just keep on going. But hope that helps you with that distinction. Acting is just talking about, you've got a town manager, that person's indisposed. They're in the hospital, they're on vacation, through that.
Any additional commentary with regard to those distinctions or other provisions contained within Article Three?
Did have one question uh on three, uh, section three. I I see the distinction, I guess maybe this is uh more for the legal uh folks, but I I it's obviously called out for the police department and you said that it's kind of standard that the clerk be called out, the police department, there's a longstanding history and charters to have that. Uh, I'm curious, is it normal to not have the fire? Like, why police called out but not fire? And and part of that also is um kind of the recent town uh topic around the fire department and it being the whether or not we could use Winter Garden or whether it had to be our own. And I'm just kind of curious if that, if that's something you see in charters called out or is is Oakland's unique?
Great question. Um, I I cannot, and not saying there isn't one, but I cannot recall an instance where I have seen a fire department called out separately in a charter. But as I said, I I have seen uh police departments referenced a a number of times in charters. I think it, just in my observation from seeing where I've seen it most often, where you have those provisions that usually trace back a long time. I don't need to tell you, you all know, law enforcement officers, uh, when you really get down to it, they have an immense amount of power. They're, they're the ones with the power to actually arrest you. You know what I'm saying? So in in any jurisdiction, there's a lot of power that goes with that. So historically, at least, there's, you know, been some interest in, you know, being very keen on who's going to be running the police department and this and that. I can tell you, in a couple places, I could not recommend this, but it 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 dates from old, old history. There are a number of cities uh in Florida that that's for the past eighty-some-odd years, the police chief is elected separate and apart from everything else, not suggesting that at all. Although I will note, we elect sheriffs in all sixty-seven counties. You know, there are historical reasons for that too, but um I I've seen it a lot less. I can't recall an instance, not saying there isn't one, I can't recall with regard to fire department, but I I think it has to do with history and I think it has to do with power. Uh, fire department is very important, obviously, but um they don't have the power to arrest you, at least in a, you know, a regular basis.
All right, thank you.
I would also add um one sort of distinction that I see between the police department and fire is that the town of Oakland has its own police department, and so that is funded and controlled by the town itself. Uh, whereas the town contracts with Orange County to provide fire services. And so with the fire services really coming from an entity that is not under the direct control of the town, uh, I think there is um not as much reason to to spell out exactly what their duties and powers are in the charter, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. That's exactly where I was going with.
Which says a lot more relevant.
Yes, it's this, it's the Orange County Fire Department and our station thirty-seven is just a division of the county's fire department.
Wait, I did have a question. Um, I was noticing just recently, the town clerk has protections in that if you were to get rid of them, it'd have to be approved by commission. I don't see that in the police chief's wording, um, but they have state of Florida protections. Is that why that might be?
I doubt it is why, because um as law enforcement officers do have uh some of their own are you talking about the protections about the, this is all flooding back to me now, uh, the protections about uh the opportunity to request a hearing before the governing body?
Yes, yes.
I don't think that's why, because that, that's a relatively recent creation. I think this predates, it probably predates all of that. But um
I was just curious, because they're appointed the same way, but they're not removed the same way.
Think that just um I can speculate as to why they made that distinction uh there.
When I read this language, the the town clerk language in section three point five, um states the town clerk may be removed by the town manager with the approval of the commission. And and so just to draw that distinction, I I, to me, that language doesn't necessarily indicate that a hearing would would be permitted or or required or any such thing. I it almost, I mean, I read it as something that could be added to a consent agenda under circumstances where
I think that's correct. And 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 I I haven't dusted off my memory of of the particular statute that uh police was referring to in a couple of years. I did have to implement it a couple of years ago or something. My general recollection, there's a statute tucked away where uh when a um police chief in particular has been terminated, they have an opportunity, doesn't have to be prior to the termination. I think it's uh within, they have to be given notice of a, within a period of time, they have the opportunity, if they want to, to come and talk to the governing body to try to have about as much as I protections with regard to law enforcement officers are a subject of frequent legislation by the uh by the Florida legislature. So trying to anticipate or guess, you know, what the law is going to be a couple of years from now as to all those protections, not really a fruitful endeavor. So I wouldn't want to try to put anything in a charter to try to match that because it might look
Why is the termination not addressed in the charter?
That's why I was, that was my question, is why is one say one thing and the other one is absent? I mean, there must be some history there or else it was just inadvertently left out. I don't know. I mean, what what other charters may say, we may want to look at that, but.
Section three, six, C, to me, looks like it's trying to be one of those very broad statements that somebody knows something. But it it seems funny, though, that it's not specifically addressed. The police chief may be removed by that happens.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think um with regard to the police chief, um the police chief would be subject to the general removal provisions up in the manager powers and duties. Okay, so uh up in three point three A, uh, the manager shall be responsible for the hiring, supervision, removal of all town employees. Fix the salary of town employees within the salary range set by the town commission. Town manager shall appoint all department heads subject to the approval of the town commission. Reading all that together, barring a more specific provision elsewhere in the charter, that means that generally, the town manager is uh in charge of hiring and firing all employees. You layer on an exception to that, to appoint department heads, you also need the approval of the town commission. But you don't need the approval of the town commission to remove any employee, including those department heads, except ones when you get down even more specifically listed, for example. And um I know that may be a little cumbersome to kind of read three layers of it all together here, but that's how legislation reads all the time. You got to start from general to specific. And um whenever you have a blanket statement and then a more specific statement in any sort of legislation, the specific generally trumps over the blanket. You're saying we're okay. I'm saying it, it is addressed in here when you read all these parts uh together with each other. There's a desire to change the legal effect of that. Of course, that can be changed. Charter does specify who has the authority. All of them and then layers on with respect to uh the town clerk, that city manager or town manager any other um questions? Or uh things to discuss concerning matters in um Article Three?
I'm clear. No other discussion? Okay, we've completed our discussion of Articles one through three. Um, any lay thoughts or commentary with regard to the prior discussion? Or clarifications required or necessary? Hearing none? We would move to public comment. No members of the public being present, um, we would look to discussion items for the next meeting. Um, item agenda number eight.
Actually, Madam Chair, I'm I'm just looking over uh minutes from the last meeting. I knew uh that there were, I think I've addressed some of them, uh, that that have come up where where there were kind of some more in-the-weeds election-related matters and and so on. While I'm with you here, I wanted to take the opportunity to provide any further clarity on any uh other kind of general matters that may have come up. Stephanie, are there anything, anything jumping to your mind? Some of the things I uh uh hadn't uh hadn't touched?
Uh, I I recall and I can't remember in what context the word was being used, because it does appear throughout the charter all over the place, but the word, there was some discussion about the word qualified. Um, and and some folks may be asking about it, would it be advisable to define that word? And I, me search for where I think.
Which context it was, because I remember you mentioning that to me and I, I think I can offer some thoughts on that to me.
It may have been section two point four, the last sentence in that section reads only qualified electors of the town who have resided continuously in the town for at least one year preceding their qualifying date shall be eligible to hold the office of commission member or mayor.
Where we, which uh which was that, two point what?
Two point four at the very end, last sentence.
They qualified electors of the town. Okay, i- in in the context of um yeah, i- i- in the context of that particular sentence, qualified electors is I guess you could almost make qualified um uh it's almost superfluous there. It it's primarily referencing the next word, electors. Um, and whether or not someone is an elector of a given jurisdiction is a matter of state law. It did not used to be decades and decades and decades ago. So you'll see some old references in charters where it'll, it will report to say who's allowed in a town to vote in the town and not allowed to vote in the town. All that went away decades ago. Anyone, if uh if your residency is uh for the purposes of registering to vote is within a municipality, you're a qualified elector of that municipality. If it's in the unincorporated county, you're qualified elector of just the unincorporated county, et cetera. So that's completely a creature of state law on that. Um, when we proceed on that sentence, only qualified electors of the town, so you're an elector of the town pursuant to state law, have resided continuously in the town for at least one year preceding their qualifying date. And there, it's a great thing about election law, or a lot about a lot areas of law, use the same word to mean related but slightly different things here. Uh, there, that reference to qualifying is the date you are qualifying for office. Now, qualifying for office is actually well-defined in the Florida Election Code, all right? It does not necessarily mean when you initially um uh open up a campaign depository, all right? You can do that well in advance. Qualifying for an election happens during the qualifying period, all right, which is a discrete period of time. You can be, you can open a campaign depository. You can be, you can open a campaign depository and, um, and designate a, um. Uh, designate a depository and name your treasure and all that stuff, well in advance of that and be collecting money and so on, but you're not. Qualified until qualifying week usually comes and you actually qualify. That's all defined in state election, all right, so that's where you'd measure that from, uh, in that context. So, I hope that helps, again, very similar word, but different context, but that's, that's precisely what. And the, um. Number of the other things I was elaborating on, I remembered from a conversation with Stephanie as to other matters I knew. Over your minutes, nothing else is really jumping out at me, so sorry to.
Wade, Wade, I think one of them was what is considered continuously, so only qualified electors of the town who have resided continuously.
Sure, um, yeah, and I. Just thinking through how often I see that particular adverb or something like it in other ones, it's, it's, um. The important. Word I would suggest in that clause is reside, okay, so. Reside, as I, as I indicated, residing or residence with respect to, uh, someone being an elector or so on, is a. Is a continuous state, absent those two facts I mentioned, changing. So, for example, I reside in Maitland, Florida, all right? I go to condo in Cocoa Beach once a month on the weekends, um. And there with my wife and daughters, uh, the nights I'm sleeping over in Cocoa Beach, I still reside in. Uh, when I travel, if I travel to Colorado for two weeks, I still reside in there. So, it really goes to the state of matters there, pursuant to the relevant case law, and again, those two main points. You have, uh, a, an intention that you reside in a place and you have facts to back it. And again, we can get into some detail as to what evidence would be taken to establish this and so on. Hope that helps a little bit.
To, to add to that, I, I was thinking about the, the coastal city example that you provided earlier, Wade. Um, a- and, and I agree with you that the word continuously is almost superfluous here, because if you think about that circumstance where. You've got a sitting council member and then his home is destroyed by a hurricane, and so he's got to go stay, um, outside of the city limits for a few months, we would. We would call that continuous residency.
Uh, based on, it, it, based on the hypothetical.
Yes, that, those facts, yes.
Hypothetical facts.
And so really, the word continuously doesn't, doesn't do a whole lot.
I, I will tell you what it does do, okay, um. I will tell you what it does do, it does very little, but I think it does do something. I don't think you could, with that language there, I don't think it would be a fair reading in any event, but I think this helps clarify it. Uh, I don't, um, think someone could, uh, reside six months in the town of Oakland. And then change their residence, just affirmatively, I'm going to change where I vote and I'm, uh, uh. Change their residence to Albuquerque, New Mexico for three months and live there. And vote there and, you know, all this stuff, and then come back and do another seven months and say, well, I did six months. And then it's, it's got to be, it's, it's got to be unbroken. Um, so I think continuously there, it's, it's saying, it's got to be. Proceeding the qualifying date, so running right up to it, and it's got to be unbroken. I, I think it's doing something, but not very much.
This is reminding me.
Thing where people trying to say that, which would be, uh. Strained reading.
Yes, um, I, I believe also at the last meeting, I'm recalling, there was some discussion about snowbirds that was brought up and. And, you know, how, how would snowbirds be, hmm, how would they fall here under the existing charter language? And would it be advisable to make any amendments to address snowbirds?
Snowbirds, um. Snowbirds are going to depend on what those individuals are actually doing with respect to things like registering to vote. It is, it's not my, uh, experience. With folks that they, you know, change where they're registered to vote twice a year, when they're, you know, moving back up north and back and so on. They're registered to vote one particular place and that's where it is, it tends to be for. Many reasons, including homestead protection, if they're between here and North Carolina and here in Michigan. Tends to be they stay registered here one hundred percent of the time. Um, even though they may live three months out of the year somewhere else, uh, and so on. So long as they're not registered anywhere else and they maintain, you know, their residence here, that second element, the facts to back it up. Someone who lives three months somewhere else, uh, would remain, uh, by live, I mean, that's where they are sleeping every night for, you know. A couple of months or what have you, but they're registered to vote here, maintain a residence here and so on. Um. That's going to check the box, now, somebody going to vote for somebody who, uh, who three months out of the year lives in Michigan, don't know. That would presumably be a very relevant, uh, you know, fact to come out in an election. But when you're looking at the, the test of, under Florida law, what would constitute residency in. An election, uh, in an election context, that's what you're looking. You get into real problems if folks are registered in both places though, for example, that's a whole different kettle.
It sounds like we would almost get at addressing the, the question of snowbirds by. Potentially adding in some of those city of Orlando provisions about. What type of, of evidence do you need to bring to demonstrate that you are a resident?
Yeah, I, 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 that, those sorts of inquiries, however, however, um. You know, put together, I think would get at the relevant underlying facts, because if someone happens to. Visit Oakland three months out of the year, but they're registered to vote in Michigan and so on, they're not registered here and they're not whatever. Um. That's not going to pan out, out under the analysis that, that I was just laying out.
However, I think earlier we did indicate we wanted to, you to provide us with what those evidence factors were from city.
Some looking at what city of Orlando has and anything else that jumps out at us, other jurisdictions, but that's, that's a local example.
Just as a matter of, um, discussions for the next item, we would lean to those additional, um. Moments of research associated tasks with the attorneys to provide, um, with regard to the evidence of residency. Second item would be follow up with Elise, um, with regard to the supervisor of elections and their potential for appearance at the next meeting or a future meeting. Um, compiled with the data, um, from that office with regard to. That you've, actually, you've provided that, so I think we can strike that.
And then I'll also do research on the compensation comparisons, that's all brought up for that section.
And then just taking a look at the additional amendments, um, four, five and six potentially.
At least speaks with the league, would you like at least to inquire just about the other, um, whether, if they have a magic spreadsheet that can spit out? You know, information about term limits and, uh, about, uh, districts versus at large, would that be useful to?
Sure, if that's possible.
And just in repetition, a review of articles four, five and six. It looks like seven could be for another meeting.
Or, yes, I think that that would work just fine.
Any additional items for consideration for the next meeting? Or thoughts?
See, the, um. Just looking down our, um, memo. Here, we had some. Revisions, uh, with a suggestion for y'all to take a look at, yeah, there and, uh, or. By, uh. And I believe in six, uh, in six, so, um, that, that could be some things to discuss a little further, in addition, anything else?
Hearing no additional items?
I'm s- sorry, you can go, um, Ms. Chair, one second, uh. Uh, a request, and maybe it's just me, but I, I do have like a stack of papers I try to flip through and, and as we, we're making changes. It, is it, um, I guess my own ignorant words, i- is there like a document with draft changes turned on or track changes turned on where we could see? Kind of some of the things that we've preliminarily agreed to and some of the stuff that's getting changed, because. It, it's getting hard, uh, for me, it's getting a little difficult to track down what, what we've covered and what's left, i- is that possible?
What I would, what I would suggest is this, um, and it's, it's a really important thing, just to conceptually work through things. Uh, I think we could put together kind of a, a running set of lists as opposed to a, a, um. Single copy of the charter with all the strike throughs and underlines, that'd be kind of mixing, mashing all the, the different potential changes here, which might get a little confusing. Um, instead, it may, uh, make sense for us to put together, um. Uh, for example, the, the, you know, kind of a draft of, of the. Cleanup charter amendment, just with those, uh, cleanup changes, uh, put in, uh, then charter amendment. All talked about. At the, uh, beginning here about the, the, um, changing the matter concerning the filling vacancies and. Those are kind of two discreet charter amendments that, that I think you all may have some initial. Positive inclination towards, we can have those, uh, put together and that can kind of be the, the tracking of those. Um, and as we see whether or not there's anything else that be, should be thrown into any of those pots, we can firm up, uh, uh, final recommended ballot language.
Yeah, that would, I mean, that would be helpful for me, I don't know how the, the rest of the folks in the room feel about that.
Looks for me.
Looks like our next meeting is slated for April twenty first at three P M. And hearing no other concerns, we would move to adjourn at four twenty three.
Make the motion to adjourn.